Hello everyone and thanks for joining us on News West 9. I'm Sydney Jolavette. Twenty days, that's all the time left before the November 5th election. We've been bringing you the stories from our local races and speaking to all of our local candidates. And today's spotlight race is for the Odessa City Council at-large position. And joining me in studio is Mr. Craig Stoker. He will be running for the first time for the at-large position. Thank you so much for taking the time to talk to me today.
Well, thank you so much for having me.
And so we're gonna jump right in. And so we've met before, we've talked before, interviewed before, and there are many people who know who you are in the community, but there are also some people that might not be familiar with you. So could you just give them a really run-of-the-spill who you are?
My name is Craig Stoker and I am from Odessa. I'm a third-generation Odessaan. I grew up here and like so many of my age, I left, I was never coming back. And you know, I've been back for 15 years now, working in the community with different nonprofits, volunteering on different boards, my kind of real jobs. I worked for the West Texas Food Bank for a little over eight years and now I'm the Executive Director for Meals on Wheels of Odessa.
Absolutely. And so as a first-time candidate, what really fresh perspectives do you think you would bring to Odessa City Council?
Well, it's actually kind of interesting. I did run in 2018 for a district. So I live in District 3, which is kind of, it used to be mostly on the west side, they've redrawn the lines. But so I did run in 2018 for my district and I always say, very thankfully, I lost. It was one of the last nice elections that we had in Odessa and my opponent and I became friends. We were neighbors and Dietra White won the position. She was the better candidate. She had worked for the city and had the knowledge needed to sit in that seat. She appointed me to different boards and committees that serve the city. So I was able to learn about how the city operates and functions kind of from the inside. It gave me knowledge that I wouldn't have had otherwise and prepared me to be where I am today. It allowed me to learn how to ask questions and research and find the information I'm gonna need. So although this is my first time running for the at-large seat, it's not my first time running for council. But again, I do feel that that experience prepared me for where I am today.
Absolutely. And so kind of as a, I want to say as a citizen looking at city council, or just from the outside looking in or inside looking out, how you want to frame it, what would you say are the biggest challenges that face the city of Odessa and how should the city council, what specific measures should they be taking to alleviate those issues?
You know, city council is tasked with some very basic city operations. You've got roads, infrastructure with water, you know, your roads, water, your trash pickup, services like the parks and public safety. There of course are a couple of other things that fall into those categories, but those are really kind of your five basic services the city needs to provide. We have really kind of gotten out of our lane in a few areas and we've dropped the ball on a few of those things. I realize that some of those hot potatoes landed in the lap of this council. They've been going on for years. Things have been deferred and languished a little bit, not paid attention to. But it's time to really start digging in, really pay attention, but really hire good leaders to do that. City council is tasked with hiring the city manager. In my role as Executive Director, my board has hired me to run Meals on Wheels. It's my job to do that. As city council, it's our job to hire a city manager. This council chose to hire a city manager with no experience, no education on how to be a city manager, and they did that in spite of setting the criteria that they needed that education and that experience. I would like to have somebody in the role who has the experience in running a city of our size. I think we get into these problems because we still think, you know, Odessa's the small little town that we remember from the 90s, that Friday Night Lights, you know, dream atmosphere, whatever it is. But we are not a town of 75,000 people anymore. You drive around, the streets are packed. You look at our trash problem, there are more people than what our system can handle. Same with the water, same with the sewer. We've got to be able to recognize that we are now a town of 120,000, 130,000 people. We've got to act that way. We've got to have leadership in place that knows how to handle a city of that size. And we just don't. So the first thing that we need to do as a council is find those leaders to put the staff in place. You know, this council has almost taken pride in running off, two-thirds, they say two-thirds, they've actually run off 18 department heads out of city councils. So the institutional knowledge, the hundreds of years of knowledge that those staff people had walked out the door. How do you replace that? Well, they've replaced it with buddies and people who came from other departments and not people who had the experience in those roles that they need. So you've seen things happen like in our finance department where the city has been unable to complete all of their audits. We're years behind on our audits and so credit ratings have been pulled. Odessa has lost bond ratings and from two of the major bond ratings, two of the three have pulled our bond ratings. If we had a need to go out for a bond, we couldn't. That's a big deal. They're saying it's not a big deal. The problem is, that's gonna stay on our record forever. When we go out for a bond next time, when we do need to replace the sewer plant, when we do need to replace the roads, when we do need to go out for those bonds, that note's on our account. It's gonna cost us more money. That's why it's a big deal. Yeah, they're gonna say it's not a big deal today, but in the future, it's gonna be a big deal. That's what I want to do. I want to plan for the future. I know today's problems are done. Today's problems are done. It's just a fact. We've got to look at Odessa for 2030, 2040, 2050. We've got to make those decisions today. We've got to start thinking about that. That's what I want to do. I want to look at Odessa's future. I want to maximize Odessa's potential. You talk to anybody, "Why do you live in Odessa?" You could choose to live anywhere else. "Why do you live in Odessa?" There's two or three answers you'll get. The people, the opportunity, the possibilities. I want to maximize on that.
Absolutely. Very well said. And so you brought up some really good points and the really hot-button topics that you were talking about and I want to touch a little bit on them specifically, talking about the water. There have been really just a lot of boil water notices that people have been going through. The social media's been blowing up with questions about the city of Odessa's water. And really, what is your kind of stance on the issue itself and the direction that Odessa City Council has, the steps they've made to resolve those issues?
Well, let's talk about the steps they've made first. You know, I was reading some of the comments on my own Facebook and I was given some credit for giving them credit. And I do give them credit. I'm happy that they figured out that the deal that was made in 2014 with Pioneer Natural Resources can be used to fix these things. Now, what I don't understand is why it took them four years to do it. Well, three and a half. They figured it out six months ago. You hear a lot that "we've only had the majority two years, we've only had the majority two years." I don't understand that. Leaders should be able to sit in a room and come to an understanding about how to move forward on the issues, working together, because we're here to represent Odessans. We're here to make sure that these things, issues, whatever it is, get solved on behalf of the people who elected us. And if you can't sit in a room with people you disagree with and come to an agreement, I don't think you're a leader. So these accomplishments that they have put down on paper, they've all happened in the last six months. I don't understand that. I want to get in there, figure out, really from day one, you hear that a lot, you know, "I want to start on day one." You know, the reality is government moves at a glacial pace. It's designed that way. You don't want things in your government changing quickly because these things are very serious things. You don't want your water to stop tomorrow because we've made a rash decision. So back to leadership. We need to find leaders to put in place people who understand these issues. If that is not somebody we hire internally, then it is hiring and updating our water master study. There was a plan done in 2019 that has mostly been ignored. We need to revisit that study. We need to update that. We need to figure out, you know, how do we build in the infrastructure we need? You see a lot of growth in Odessa on the northeast side. Do we have the capacity to do that? Do we have the water towers? Do we have the pump stations? Do we have the sewer facilities downstream to take care of it on the other end? We need to make sure that we can handle what is happening to our population. You see studies that say Odessa and the Permian Basin will only continue growing. I think the estimate in 2050, we're gonna need to add, you know, something like 150,000, 150,000, 190,000 to the workforce in the Permian Basin. My understanding is that 2050 has now been moved up to 2040. My understanding is also that we do not graduate enough students out of our system to cover that number. So we've got to get people to move here just to cover our workforce. How do you do that when you can't attract people? How would you move here if when you Google "Odessa," this is what you see. The water doesn't turn on, the trash isn't being picked up, there's fights in city council? You wouldn't. So we're losing people that would become taxpayers in Odessa to Midland, to Andrews, to Monahans, which, you know, good for them. They're taking care of their folks. We can do the same thing in Odessa. We've got to do those things.
Absolutely. And that really ties really well into my next question, talking about transparency and communication. Really, the premise of this interview is kind of what are you seeing in city council and what do you feel you would bring to city council if you were elected? So that's my question for you as far as transparency and communication. What do you feel needs to improve and how would you enhance it?
You know, talking about transparency, again, the members of this council, last night, the mayor on the mayor debate was very proud of the contract that this council has signed with a group called TGAA. Now, reading more into the contract, there seem to be several conflicts of interest with who brought the contract to us. It seems to be a gentleman associated with our city manager, who may or may not have been in business together through a consulting agency. The gentleman is also representing my opponent as her political consultant, the mayor as his political consultant, and District 1 as his political consultant. So tie-ins there with that. The contract, we are not allowed to leave unless there's a vote of our citizens. We're not allowed to know how much this service is gonna cost us. The things that it's asking us to do are certainly good things. Audits and transparency and job listings with salaries so that people know where their money is being spent. Those aren't bad things, but we don't need to get into a contract with an outside firm to do that. There are already guardrails set in place. And to get into a firm that we can't, into a contract that we can't get out of without voter approval, that's just, we're having trouble figuring that one out. But again, they're very proud of that. The thing about those lists of things, you know, number one, needing an audit. Well, we're not even doing that. The list of positions and salaries, that's not on the website. So the things that are in this agreement that the mayor's so proud of, we're not even doing. They're not even following the agreement they set. Kind of like hiring a city manager and not following the job description they wrote. So the transparency just isn't there. Again, last night, the mayor brought up, was asked about the contracts that he signed with four senior city staff. Couldn't answer. They seem to have signed a three-year deal with these four city employees that no matter what, the city of Odessa is gonna pay them out. No matter what. They leave on their own, they commit a crime, they, no matter what, we're paying them out. That's not a good deal for Odessa. That's not how contracts should work. There should be a clause in there that if you misbehave, I bet your contract says, "If you go out and misrepresent News West 9, you are no longer working for News West 9." So we've got to go work on the transparency of these things to say, "These are the contracts we're working with. These are the deals we're making with our staff. They need to be open and honest and fair." I talked about in my debate Monday, what we've done at Meals on Wheels is work very hard to make sure that our books, our financials, our policies are available to the public. As a nonprofit, they have to be. We have worked very closely with an auditing firm to have those things available. I welcome anybody. Come ask. We'll make anything available. We work very hard to ensure that our donors' dollars are being spent on our mission. I want to make sure that when you give us $100, you can come in and see what we've done with that $100. We need to be able to do the same thing with the city. When we are taking citizens' dollars through their taxes, they work hard for that money and they need to know that they're giving those services back. So far, no water, no trash, parks haven't been updated. You know, I'm glad we made a little noise on Facebook and they've been mowing the easements and keeping up with the sidewalks a little bit, but you know, what have they done for you lately? Raise your rates? Have you gotten better service? No. They're still only taking your trash once a week. So those are things I want to do. I want to let the citizens be able to come and question and say, "Hey, what's going on with this? Why isn't this available on the website?" You go click on the link on the website and it goes to a dead page. Page not available. But one of their accomplishments is a brand-new website, user-friendly. I don't get it. We've got to do better.
Absolutely. And so we're just about wrapping up, just a couple more questions for you. And so my next one is, how do you feel that new leadership could help address the growing concerns for the city of Odessa and specifically your leadership style?
Well, what I've done at Meals on Wheels is bring everybody to the table. You have to have buy-in from your team so that they understand the mission, they understand their goals, and they understand how to move forward. It does me no good, if I came into the station and said, "No, you're not doing reporting right. That's not how you work a camera. That's not how you write a script." You would look at me like I was crazy. You would say, "That's, you don't know what you're talking about." You're right. I don't know how to write the script that goes in the teleprompter. I don't know how to do the white balance on the camera. So why would I tell you how to do your job? You need experts to come in. You need people who walk in those shoes every day to sit down and say, "Listen, this is how it works. This is how we do our job. This is what we see every day." And you need to use that information to formulate your plan to move forward. Right now, at Meals on Wheels, we're in the middle of a big strategic planning, strategy session. Instead of a one-day, hang Post-it notes on the wall, write down your dreams and move on, this is a six-month process that is involving every one of our team, donors, volunteers, our board, even our clients. And we're talking to everyone and saying, "How can we serve you better? How can we do these things better?" You know, my friend Dustin Fawcett, who's the Ector County Judge, one of the first things he did was sit down with all of the county employees and say, "What can we do better?" One of the first things he found out was, "The Coke machine was broken." They got the Coke machine fixed and guess what? Everyone's a little happier at work. So these little things that we can find out by coming in and listening, instead of coming in and ruling with an iron fist, so many of the people I've reached out to and talked to in the past month and a half when I've been visiting departments, we've got some really big morale issues. They're scared to come to work. They're scared to talk. They're scared to reach out. They're scared of retaliation. That does not make for a great job environment. We need to fix these things with leadership so that our folks who love Odessa and love to come to work every day want to do that. If all it takes is putting good leaders in there, then that's a great start. You know, there's the old saying that people don't leave bad jobs, they leave bad managers. That's been true all my life. I've never left a bad job. I've always left a bad manager. So that's the start, is sitting down, meeting folks where they are and saying, "What do you need in your department?" You know, Meals on Wheels, that first meeting we had, they just needed office supplies. They needed pins and highlighters. That was such an easy fix and that made their jobs easier, made it better to come to work. So again, I think having those conversations, having proper leaders who know how to lead a team that way, again, we hire the city manager, they deal with the staff. Let's find those people, put them in place, and get on with it.
Absolutely. And so one of my last questions for you is, I know you said earlier that it's kind of like a glacier system, but if we're doing a little prediction and you are elected into this office, day one, what is your first action item? Whether it be roads, whether it be water, aging infrastructure, when you get that office, if elected, what is your first order of action?
Well, certainly, we need to address these emergency items. If we don't have water, if we don't have sewer treatment, we don't have a community. If you can't turn the water on to drink or cook with or bathe your children, you leave. You are not gonna stay here. And we cannot let that happen. If when you flush your commode, it doesn't go anywhere, you are not gonna stay here. Those are emergency items we have got to deal with immediately. So work on those water, infrastructure things first. Let's figure out those issues. Again, there have been dollars allocated to these things. Let's make sure they're spent. This council has a track record of making big budgets and giving themselves a pat on the back for allocating money, but they also have a track record of not spending it. So again, putting leadership in place to make sure the dollars are spent where they're supposed to be, making sure that these emergency items are priority number one. Without water, we don't survive. So water is probably A number one. Number two is public safety. You don't want to live somewhere where you don't feel safe. You get out on the roads here, they're packed. Somebody, I saw a Facebook post that says, "Does anybody feel like Odessa's gotten more packed in the last, you know, several months?" It has. Speaking with my friend at Motran, Odessa is the only city in our region that has had an increase to its commute. Our commute has increased by 13 to 15 minutes every day and you feel that. You also see accidents, you see red light runners, you see speeders. Well, OPD is down 60 officers, so we aren't patrolling traffic. You see an OPD officer, they're on their way to a call. They're not out patrolling traffic. We need to fully fund the police department so that they can keep us safe, they can keep our roads safe. Again, crime is down. I applaud Chief Gurke for bringing crime down, but the perception, do you feel safer? No. So let's work on that, number two. Number three, let's get to investing in Odessa. Let's make the community a place where we want to live, that we're proud of, where there's not trash in every gutter, where the weeds aren't growing out of every corner. We can have these agreements. You hear from this, these, you know, I've heard it in the debate last night and these are state highways that run through our town. We can't do anything about it. Wrong. We can have a partnership. We can work with TechDOT. We can work with the county. You can make agreements to work together to do these things. You know, number three is making Odessa a place that you want to live, a place that you're proud of. I know that this council has a talking point that several of the roads that run through Odessa are state highways and that Odessa has no control over that. Well, I disagree with that. We can have agreements with the county and TechDOT to come up with partnerships to maintain these things, to maintain the sidewalks, to maintain the gutters so that they don't have weeds growing out of them, that it just looks like a nicer place to live. If you do a simple thing like just making the place look a little nicer, you know, what happens when you clean your room? What happens when you make your bed? You have a little sense of pride. You have a little sense of, you know, "This is mine, I have a sense of ownership in it." I want to bring campaigns to town that do those things. Work with Keep Odessa Beautiful to have neighborhood cleanup campaigns. Work with the mayor's office to do a citywide cleanup. Work with the chamber to do all the chamber businesses. Hey, clean up your own front porch. Let's do these things that are cleaning up our own room and making our own bed to give a little sense of pride. These are three things that, you know, they sound simple, they're probably not, or else somebody would do them, but if you put the people in place who know how to run a city, I think they can be done. We've got the money to do it. It's been shown that we've got a giant amount of money in our fund balance to spend. Even this council, who just passed a lovely tax decrease that they were forced to pass, is gonna raise $275 million that are unspent funds. Let's use those money to give raises to our folks. We've got city staff that are working their tails off. They haven't been valued, they haven't had raises, they haven't, they haven't been taken care of. So take care of our people, take care of our city, invest in Odessa, let's make it a place we all want to live, that we're proud of, that we're proud to call home. I love Odessa, I'm from here, I'm still here out of my own free will. I'm one of that group of folks, we could go anywhere. I feel like a lot of people are. There are so many people that could live anywhere they want, but they choose to live here. We love it here, the people, the opportunity, the network that we have. There's something very special about Odessa. And with a little bit of work, a little bit of hard work, we can do it. And I always say, "We live out here on an island in West Texas. We have to take care of ourselves." We do a really good job of it, but we know that. We know we have to take care of ourselves. We can't depend on somebody else, but we're very good at that. So it's time to roll up our sleeves, it's time to take some accountability for ourselves, our own actions, even the past actions. But it's time to do that, it's time to move forward. I think we can do that. New leadership, new council. I hope to earn your vote and I'm ready to serve the city of Odessa.
And so those are all of my questions for you. If there's anything that I might not have touched on, do you like to highlight? Or if not, just a closing thought that you would like to give?
Well, you know, again, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to be able to run for office. I'm grateful that I'm in a position to serve Odessa in this capacity. I'm grateful for the knowledge that I have learned over the years about leadership in my role as a nonprofit leader. I'm grateful to my team that has been able to pick up the slack when I've kind of been out here on the road show, running for office. I'm grateful to my board for allowing me to do this. But I want the community to know that the leadership that I bring is rooted in that really deep sense of service to the community. Working in nonprofits, being out in the community, seeing the people that we serve through the food bank and through Meals on Wheels, I see folks day in and day out who really struggle, who really need the services the city has to offer. These are not the people who live in the country club, who live on the east side, who have typically been represented and who you continue to hear about through my opponent and others, talking about the elites and the others. You know, I live close to downtown, I live over by Bowie, by OHS. I don't live in the area where this seat has typically been held. I live in District 3. I feel that I bring to the table a different perspective, representing the community of folks that typically has not been represented. There have been so many people who have reached out, citizens, city staff, all who really have seen my work in the community and feel like I can bring that voice to council. And that's what I want to do. I want to bring that voice. At-large means I represent every district in the city. I don't just represent one district or one group of people. So I have the opportunity to bring an elevated voice to council to represent everyone. I've done that through my work in nonprofits. In the two years I've been at Meals on Wheels, we've gone from serving 450 a day to almost 1,000. We've grown. We've included people. We've included those who wouldn't otherwise have been included. We've grown our service area, we've doubled. I want to do the same thing with the city. I want to make sure that everybody's included. I want to make sure everybody has a voice. Those that typically are cast aside and not listened to, that's what we've done with Meals on Wheels, that's what we did at the food bank. We have this great opportunity. The other thing we've had the ability to do with Meals on Wheels and at the food bank, you know, I was part of the development team that brought in, you know, looking at the numbers, you know, over $100 million in grant funding. We've got to do the same thing at the city. We're leaving money on the table. We've got to be able to work with state funding, with private funding, there's even federal money that we're leaving on the table. We've got to do better. We can do lots of these things to be able to make our citizens' lives easier, because when you look at the revenue for the city, we should not be bringing in 40% of the city's revenue through your water bill. We've got to be able to find ways to buy that water bill down. I know it's because we've issued debt and we've issued COs and we've done these things and tied it to the water bill, but we should be able to find grant funding through the Water Development Board. I know that the director of the water treatment is looking at grants right now. I applaud him for those efforts. Why haven't we done that? Why has it been four years? Why have we been waiting? Again, back to those questions. Why has it taken four years to get to the point where they want to take action? I want to be the leader that gets in, spots the problems, figures out an action plan, and takes action. Shouldn't take Shouldn't take four years to do that. Shouldn't take two years to do that. I know it's not going to happen on day one, but we need to get in there and at least formulate a plan, find the right people to get into those roles who can put that plan into action and really take the steps to move forward. That's what I want to do with the council. That's how I want to represent my city. That's how I want to represent the people who will elect me into that spot. I want to make sure that they know my door is always open. You can find me on Facebook, you can find me on the internet, my email is always open. I have done my very best to answer every question that has come to me. Sometimes they get lost in the junk mailbox. Facebook is weird and hides comments. I've done my best to make sure that those get unhidden, that those get answered. So please reach out if you have a question. Again, I'm doing my very best to answer every one of them. I will get to it eventually, I promise. Thank you again for having me and please, go vote.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for joining us. I would like to also remind to all of our voters that early voting is on October 21st, ahead of November 5th election, and you can find all of that live coverage. It will be right here on News West Nine. We have interviews with both candidates. They will be on our nine plus app and I want to thank you so much for watching us. We will see you next time.